Call the Order, Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a regular meeting, February 3rd, 2022, and it is 6:00 PM. Ms. Benitez, will you take the role?
Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Pearl will not be here tonight. Vice Chair Frost.
Lonnie.
Okay. Chairman Pranzo.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, discussion, approval, disapproval in minutes for the regular meeting conducted on January 20th, 2022. Open up to the commission. Comments, creditorials.
Mr. Chairman, I had one correction.
Yes, sir.
It would be on page three, under presentations, information only. No, I'm sorry. Wrong spot, it's under part C. Presentation approval of the old Florence Tap House presentation, the third paragraph down, the third line, quoting that he said, "The truck will have to pull, have to go through traffic." I think we can scratch "have to go" because it's repetitive. So the sentence would read, "He said the truck will have to pull through traffic on Bailey Street." Have to go can be struck.
Okay.
And then I guess just a question, Mr. Chairman and Mari. On when you talked to us about the future development of Hunt Highway and Highway 79, the last sentence there said, "Miss Benitez said she would send out the new design for the roundabout on Highway 287, Highway 79B." If you sent that out, I didn't receive it. I wonder if you might send it again to me.
Okay.
For some reason, it didn't make it.
I didn't receive it either.
Okay, I thought I sent it out, but I guess I didn't. I will do that.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. With that, if you're ready, I'll make a motion for approval for the regular minutes, our January 20th meeting with those corrections.
A second.
Okay, sounds unanimous to me. We have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, new business. Presentation approval, approval with conditions of a design review for the new Filiberto's Restaurant on 532 South Pennell Parkway Avenue. We have a presentation. Before we start, did everyone receive a full package with the drawings?
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, for some reason, when I convert it to Adobe, I lose half the drawings. I get all the verbiage, I just don't get the drawings. But be that as it may, I know Ms. Benitez will just give us a bang-up presentation and I won't need them anyway.
Well, thank you. I do have a presentation for tonight. And we have representative here to answer any questions the commission has. Let me share my screen. We received the Filiberto's Design Review and we're now bringing it to Planning and Zoning Commission. Is now addressed at 532 South Pennell Parkway Ave. APN 202031780. The applicant was from Architecture All and Associates. The landowner is Maria Sylvia. She's not here today, but she has given the applicant the go-ahead to represent this project. I stated that there will be a new Filiberto's building and drive-thru, which is allowed within the B2 zoning or highway business commercial. The lot is currently vacant and has been so for a while. The application is for a new 2,030 square foot building. The building facade will be of your typical build and will be stuccoed. Colors will reflect that of the franchise, your white, yellow, red, and gray. And it'll include indoor dining as well as your basic food prep area for the restaurant and outdoor patio seating and, of course, the drive-through. The structure meets the B2 height requirement, which is the maximum is 40 feet, and this one only stands at 21 feet tall. The building is set back to the B2 requirements. So here, as I wish it could have been in your packet as well, Chairman, is the overall site plan. The site plan does show a future pad, but this is not what we're focusing on during this meeting. We are focusing on the first design of the building of Filiberto's. It shows the overall lot. Access will come through on Virginia and also beyond Philly Street. There will be no access from Pennell Parkway. So this is the inside concept of the floor plan. So your basic, your basic fast food restaurant that you would see. And this will be the outside. And as stated, these are the colors which runs with the franchise. So it's nothing too distinct or outside of what you would see from a Filiberto's. So stated, the access will be from Felice and Virginia. The design incorporates or needed to have at least a hundred square foot queuing lane and it approximately has 125 in. And the parking requirement for a restaurant with a drive-thru is one space per each 50 square feet of net floor area, including outdoor seating. So with the combined net floor area provided by the plans, we, they are required to at least have 16 spaces. Site plan shows 22 spaces, two of those being ADA. And we're adding the condition that the developers in the building plans show that a three-foot green wall will be in place to shield the parking and to screen the rear property line from the residential properties that are behind the site. At the moment, there is no established landscape. So there are landscape drawings within these design plans and that is to help screen the parking lot and the rear side of the building and also to screen from the front. Plans provided, in the plans, do meet the low water use and that's set in the code. There's no turf. And all outdoor lighting is directed downward and it's set to look away from the residential property or away from the rear part, which is next to the residential properties. So this should stay, the lighting should stay on the property and not go outside. Now, there is some landscaping in the right of way, as shown in the as shown in the plans. And this requires town approval, any dot approval to have that in the right of way. And the owner can do that going through the building permit process. Now signage will come later for this building site. And here is just an overall look at the landscaping of the property. Now, we are also looking to do, to add the condition that landscaping within the town right of way requires town engineer or approval from the town engineer prior to the installation. And landscaping within ADOT right of way also require ADOT approval prior to installation. This has been sent out to all the commissioners beforehand. Overall, Plan and Zoning Commission may move to approve with the listed conditions in the staff report or deny the design review for the Filiberto's Restaurant. Let's say we have a representative here. There are any questions about the designer view?
Very good. I'll turn it over to the commission for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll speak up. I have a couple of questions and maybe an observation or two. If I could, Mari, why do the plans not show the landscaping concept for the right-of-way on 79?
That I do not know.
This is Abdulham Sumersewala from Architects for All. When we, when our landscape architect, Mr. Gordon Jones, designed it, I particularly asked him to make sure we just focus on our property and not show any landscaping outside of our property. And now during this meeting, that's what I wanted to discuss. If we want to landscape within that right-of-way, what are the conditions? Because we weren't really planning on it necessarily. We could obviously put some DMC down. But if we want to actually put landscaping, I was going to ask, can we use the same amount of landscaping, kind of spread it over so it doesn't look as barren? Move some of the trees and add a few more of the shrubs?
Mr. Slattwalla, we would be getting ahead of ourselves if we told you what we would approve or not approve at this point. The town engineer has to come first. And when you two can agree on what the landscaping is, then it'll move forward to us. It's the same way with ADOT. At this point, we're not in a position to comment on landscaping along the highway. That, once you and ADOT come to an agreement, then it can move forward. And I just caution you that the town and ADOT will tell you that you are landscaping at your own risk. If they need to perform maintenance, they'll disturb your landscaping.
I completely understand. That's why I wasn't initially planning on landscaping. That's why all the landscaping is just on our property, if you look at the landscape plan.
Right, so we'll just wait until those matters are settled and then that can come forward to us.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe that the town should require that that area be landscaped so that we don't have plus or minus a 30-foot wide strip of no man's land behind the curb, which just creates an unsightly corridor down through there. I think it needs to integrate into the, I mean, they've got a good design here for landscape. I think it needs to integrate into that, so it looks like one contiguous lot there that somebody's thought out the whole thing, so I would definitely want.
I couldn't agree more. So we could make that a condition. It's kind of a tricky thing because we're making requirements on the town engineer. And with making that a condition, then both parties will have to come to an agreement that that area will be landscaped. And I do rather like that. I hope the rest of you do.
I think this is a standard business practice of other municipalities that I've dealt with is when a property comes in, that the right-of-way landscaping package is part of the, part of the deal so that it looks good. We're not left with a piece of no man's land there.
No, I couldn't agree more.
That's, that's, that's question one, and that would be a condition that I would add to the list of conditions that we have here. And then just a couple of observations, and I'm thankful that we have a representative here. And the other one that I did is, is I took this plan and I drew in the locations for the three 15-foot tall lights that you have along the west side of the property. And all three of those, or two of those, are in virtually the exact same location that you have, one of the, have a hybrid mesquite tree. And that tree, when you look it up and look up the information on it, its mature height is either, can be somewhere between 20 and 40 feet and width 20 and 40 feet. So I think you're going to be fighting against yourself if you, if you stay with that process. You're essentially putting the light in only to have it shaded by a tree. And then I kind of question, in the northwest corner and the southwest corner of the property, where you're using those hybrid mesquite trees and even your landscape architect, when he drew it in, shows them coming over into the drive lanes, which in my crude scaling, it looks like they're being planted about five feet behind the curb there. And if we've got a tree that's growing 20 feet wide, I think there's a serious problem there. Can you move them back into that area? I'd hate to see a great landscape design compromised and your lighting design compromised, because I know they're looking at the luminaires that are cast down and trying to create a safety zone there for people. But it almost seems like the two are working against each other. So that's just an observation and I will leave that for you because it's your site.
No, I appreciate the, the comment. I will touch base with both our landscape architect and our electrical engineer to make sure that this is a fairly standard trees that they've kind of used in a lot of the other projects that has seemed to work out. But I will bring this up to kind of see if there's, if they think there's another way of kind of maneuvering it because I know that every kind of, all the engineers have their own little ideas of what they want to see as part of their design as well. But I'll make sure they kind of coordinate with each other.
Just, you know, kind of the back of the napkin here, it almost looks like you've just moved those trees further west that you could accomplish what you need to instead of having them hug the curb like that. So, but food for thought, it's not a disparaging thing to me, but it just, I just hate to see a situation where you have one element working against the other element.
No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I guess the, the last question I had is, do you envision a monument sign with this project?
That's why we kept it as a deferred, because I don't know what the what the towns and the city approval would be, especially with ADOT and stuff. So I want to keep that as a secondary thing. I would like a monument sign. I know for sure the owner would prefer one. It is, I mean, obviously coming down the freeway, it's an important thing to see. So I would like one, whether it's on one of the two streets or how it works. That's kind of what we figured we would discuss at a later point.
Okay, and it's, and that's why I asked, because it might be just almost a cart before the horse thing because of the landscaping that's here. If the signage is not integrated with the landscaping, you end up planting something in front of a sign and again, you have two elements at odds with each other. So I just hope you're taking that into account.
No, no, we have, yeah, that's why we kind of said, let's keep that as a secondary thing to, so we can kind of figure out what exactly the requirements will be for landscaping, so we can make adjustments as we need to. So I do, that was another good, very good observation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the conclusion of my comments. Thank you.
Great. I just have a question on traffic. I was rather surprised to hear that there will be no entrance or exit out of the property along 79. It seems to be commonplace along that area. Is there any particular reason why you're not you're not cutting curb to allow vehicles to enter from the highway?
When we were doing our preliminaries, we actually, we played around with that idea. We initially were trying to think, the less we have to honestly, the less we have to like deal with ADOT, because we have done, dealt with it before. Maybe the, maybe the better. I think the fact that we bordered two streets and we already had the driveways and everything's already set up, that we have caught, like for fire, everything, there is no need for turnaround. There's always path. I think we kind of, we played around with a few options. We just felt that this would impact, would be the least impacted general traffic. And honestly, just the safest, easiest way to get in and out of the complex, even if they do a future thing, at least everything connects as one thorough street. So it was a kind of a decision-maker on that end.
Okay, Ms. Benitez, has the town engineer reviewed the traffic pattern?
Yes, the traffic impact analysis was done for the site and they've worked with our town engineer on that.
Okay, and he's happy with it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's really all, all I had, other than wish you good luck and look forward to seeing the additional packages. In order to get you started, do we have any other questions or comments by the commissioners? I'll take your silence as no. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll try a motion. I'll move approval of design review for the new Filiberto's Restaurant at 532 South Pennell Parkway, PZ-21-43, with the conditions that Mari had in her presentation, along with the, with the condition that landscaping be done within the right-of-way on 79 and also Philly Street and Virginia Street, so that it looks like a unified site.
I have a second. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Slattwalla.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, presentations, information only, the general plan.
We are meeting, we met with our consultants today to figure out a plan for meetings. So we are looking to do, let me bring it up here. Throughout the 60-day plan review, we are looking to go ahead and do some public hearings and some more community meetings. We are looking to schedule work sessions between council and PNC as well, so we can get as much feedback as possible before going forward with the completed 60-day draft, when we take it to further public hearings and to get approval from town council. So that's kind of what we've gotten accomplished so far. We've gotten good feedback from stakeholders outside of the town. From within the town, there are concerns about some of the information, which is understandable as we don't have access to, or full access to, the most recent census. But these are just some things that we're working on. And we've also gotten calls from other stakeholders about some tweaks they want and we are reviewing those. At that point, this is as much information as I have on the general plan. And Kathy, I still have your package if you want to come pick it up.
Thank you, Mari.
Hey, there you are.
Hi, Fred.
Any questions or comments about the general plan?
Mr. Chairman, Mari, one question. If you see things that you'd like to comment on, what's the suggested format to do that?
We encourage that to be done on the website, on the general plan website. That's on the town. It's located on the homepage. It should be the second event bar in the very middle. That'll take you to the general plan website and then it should immediately kind of zone you into general plan 60-day update. And there's a little button for comments. That's perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
I do know in speaking with Mari that she has been proactive in going out and promoting this. And from what I understand, we're getting a better turnout in terms of participating, which I'm very encouraged by, because in our first work session with the council, it seemed it was in the dozens of responses we had. And I think on something this important, we want more than less people. So, thank you, Mari.
She's speaking. I took it to the Rotary Club to speak on the 60-day update. That was a bit mortifying, but I did it.
They're nice people.
They were very nice people.
Rotary Club is notoriously a tough crowd, so.
I was expecting 12 in the crowd, not 23. That was my one thing.
Good for you.
I remember when it was three times bigger. All right, any other questions, your comments? All right, let's move along. Home Tour 2022. What can we say about that?
Home Tour is coming up on February 12th. It is from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And it is located at Hockus Square, which is on the corner of, I believe, 8th Street and Main Street.
It is.
That is the starting point and where you can buy wristbands to go on the tour. We really encourage people to go visit the open houses, because that's the only day that those houses will be open to tour through. We have six on the list. And the other buildings are more commercial and the churches, of course, and the museum and Women's Club. We will, the Women's Club and the museum will be having their own little events. And we had a good turnout at the volunteer meeting on Tuesday night, where homeowners could talk to the volunteers and walk them through what they're expected. And we walked the homeowners and the volunteers through kind of what we expect on the home tour day. You can still buy tickets online from Paper Link. It's on our community service page. You can also buy it the day of. You can also buy tickets at McFarland Building and the museum and the community center. So if you want to join us on that home tour day, please do. I encourage it greatly.
What day is that again? When is that?
February 12th, Saturday.
Not far away.
Mari, I did want to pass back to you that I've had several comments from residents in their disappointment at the second Pennell County Courthouse not being open. It's our county courthouse and I understand COVID, but as a public building, there is some disappointment on the part of the public that at least the lobby can't be open for home tour.
We were also disappointed that it wasn't open, but it is their choice ultimately.
Understand.
It is the homeowner or the owners of the buildings to have it open. And we understand their COVID concerns as we were. We were almost stopped towards the end as we had to think about the rising cases in COVID. So we are glad that they can still tour the premise and see it, because it is definitely a landmark within the town. I agree, it's kind of disappointing.
Okay, moving right along, future agenda items.
So if all goes well Monday and Wheaton Dental gets the request approved for their reduced parking, we should have the Wheaton Dental come to the next meeting for their design review approval. And then I will let Keith speak on this next item.
Right, well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, commissioners. As we discussed last meeting, we're in the throes of our new code adoption. I wanted to give you just a place saver, if Mari hasn't already sent an email out with that. So for, we have planned for February the 15th, a work session. It will be done by Zoom. It is important to council as well as our team that you guys are involved. So it will be basically council, this group as well as H stack will be involved. It will be assumed, you'll get the links. I'm not 100% sure if you will be linked in as the, or how you'll be linked in, I guess. But anyway, so we welcome the comments. We'll have a PowerPoint presentation to kind of go through some thought processes and then of course, we'll be seeking any input from this group as well as H stack and council and anybody from. And anybody from the public, of course, we're, we're not done with our public outreach either. So we're still in the contractor stage of that as well. So we'll, we hope to see you all there. Part of this will also be, it's a separate part. It's part two. Will be our beginning of our. Our good hard look at our code enforcement in town. As far as programs, how the code enforcement's done, what we want to look at, what. Council wants to look at as far as the future of that, possible revamping. Kind of redoing it, making it our own. And so there'll be some of that, we'll be discussing that. Very briefly because we will plan a separate work session for that in the future. So we hope to see you all there. So we appreciate all the input that you guys have to give to us.
Okay, thank you, Mister Eaton.
I do have one more thing to update the commission on. We are looking to go back to in-person meetings in March.
Oh, nice. I miss it. Although the refrigerator is just a couple of steps away, I do miss it. Okay, we've covered future agenda items. Call it a public.
Mister Chairman.
Response. Yes, sir.
Is this the time where we could ask for a future agenda item? Potentially?
Yeah, absolutely.
And this, this came up, kind of struck my mind as I reviewed the agenda item from tonight, the Philabertos. I noticed that between the Philaberto site and the homes to the west, there is an alley. And I'm wondering if this, is this a functional alley? If it's not functional, does the town have a process that we can? Give that alley to the adjacent homeowner so it can be a benefit and not a liability? And, and I, that, you know, this is just a, just a question because I. I, I just don't know about alleys in the town and how that's dealt with. And if we, when we do something like this and do a Philaberto's with a six foot wall behind it. If we create a, a no man's land there that's not really functional for anyone. So it's just, maybe it's a question, maybe it's just something Mari should just. Call me and tell me, but if other people are interested, I guess we could have a little discussion about it.
You made a good point. That becomes. That's something that the police department should be coming and commenting on as well. These no man lands that we accidentally. Create. Leaves opportunity. So, yeah, please, let's, let's address that. That's really in our backyard. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt. This is Kathy. I did want to add for future agenda items. I, I would request an update on the redevelopment plan. Particularly as it focuses on the south end of town. I know that for the Parata, we did a concerted effort and cleaned up the north end of town and it was beautiful. But the south end was not addressed and my concern is that. We all spent a lot of time on the redevelopment plan and I understand we got recognized with an award. But I'm not seeing what is happening in terms of execution on the plan. And I have a specific request with the home tour coming up. That the south end of town cleanup has not been addressed and out of sight, out of mind. And that's my concern. We all worked really hard on the redevelopment plan. But I think too often it's just a plan and it's not on top of mind. Of the town on how we execute on that plan. And if you don't think about it. And if you continue to let it decay. The problem only gets worse.
Well said. There was a mechanism, I don't remember it exactly, but there was a mechanism built into the redevelopment plan. That forced. The town to act on it. Now I understand. That the senior management has been preoccupied with. Finding new jobs or accepting new employment with the county. And this may be. One of the reasons we're not seeing. The action that we should. Also, I've talked with other senior town employees about this problem. And it appears that the town. Is very short. On manpower. Somehow our manpower loading has deteriorated. I don't know if it's on purpose for budget problems or. Lack of interest. Either way, it's there and it needs to be addressed. So, yeah, I think that'd make a very good. Item on our agenda. To get a, get an update on just what's going on in terms of manpower and scheduling.
Thank you, Chair.
Mister Chairman, maybe I'll, I'll ask one other request and I'm real, we're keeping this on Marty, I guess. I, I'm, I'm sure that in the background, the state is moving forward to close down the prison system here in some form or fashion. We just haven't heard anything about that. And then what the town's economic development gurus are thinking. As that transitions in, into a, a benefit for the town. And just, I think it'd be interesting to hear that, particularly as we, in the future, look at other businesses coming in, in along that corridor. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Miss Benitez, do you have enough to do yet?
More than enough.
Okay. All right. Again, call it a public. Do we have any public?
We do not.
Okay, then I will close. Call it a public. Call it a commission current events. Anybody got something fun to say?
I, I do. I, we had the Town of Florence Volunteer Day last Saturday. And I know Vice Chair Frost was out and from what I understand, it was kind of almost a record turnout. We had so many volunteers. I know of four or five different groups attacked all different parts of our town, including F Mountain. And certainly the home tour route. And I just am very proud of our town for showing up.
That was a, that was a hoot. We had a good time battling the wind and everything else that day. That was crazy, all the wind.
Okay, any other current events? And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Somebody?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. I, I would like to just point out. Vice Chair Frost, this cannot be said enough, sir. You are a tremendous asset to this committee. Questions that you posed today and in the last meeting are things that I think most people would miss. And I, I just, I can't say enough what a valuable asset you are to this team, sir.
You're here.
Thank, thank you. It's because of the hard knocks that I've experienced in another, in a previous life that. These things, these were drilled into my head. So the, the, the memories come back. So, thank you.
This is penance then.
Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion by. Commissioner Capalongo, second by Commissioner Adam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.